Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Rancho Mirage and welcome to our special study session meeting today. This is Tuesday, April 9th, and it is 10:00 a.m. And we'll call the order, uh, call the meeting to order. Notice is hereby given that the mayor of the Ren- City of Rancho Mirage has called a special meeting for the purpose stated below. And before we get to that, we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Hobart.
Yeah.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Weil.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich.
And Mayor Kite.
Here, thank you. And would you please rise and Councilman Ted Weil will lead us in the salute to our flag.
Please join me in a flag salute to our wonderful country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's topic for discussion is the discussion of the Salton Sea Joint Memorandum of Understanding and information related to the sea and the sea concept. I'd like to welcome everybody for joining us here today. As you all know, impacts related to the Salton Sea are of great concern. Today, we will hear from representatives of various organizations relating efforts to mitigate those impacts. This study session is for information purposes only, and no formal action will be taken by the city council. Do any of the council members have any comments before we call the first presenter? Okay. We have a list of several presenters, and we'll call the organization forward, and if there are more than one representative from that organization, you can decide who will speak on behalf of your organization. And if there are any questions to the presenters during the presentation, you can go ahead and ask those so we can keep information going. And so, everybody will present, we could ask questions, and then we'll go to the next presenter. Okay? Everybody with that?
Good.
Okay, so, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge Russell Betts, who was elected official from Desert Hot Springs. Russell, it's good to have you here today, taking care of your people for, for Desert Hot Springs. Okay, we'll start today with the first presenter, is the Salton Sea Coalition. And we have Chuck Parker indicated. Is there Chuck, or you? Okay.
Good morning. We would like to have several people do few of the slides each, so we'd like to open with a brief statement by Bob Terry.
Morning, Bob.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, and concerned residents. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you our vision of the future for the Salton Sea. Please bear with us if some of us are a little nervous, we're not professional speakers. But when we're done presenting our case, I think you'll be won over to our position. After that, you'll be blown away by the work already done by the two engineering firms that are here today. Keep in mind that their work has been done without any money or commitment from the state yet. The word of the day is frustration. Supervisor Perez has, on at least two public occasions, stated that he brought back John Benoit's North Lake project because he was frustrated with the lack of progress with the 10-year plan. We share that frustration. On March 19th of this year, California State Water Resource Board held their mandated assessment of the 10-year plan. The all-day meeting could be summed up in one phrase: There has been zero progress. In fact, with well over $200 million in more than two years, not one shovel has broken The supervisor's team is afraid that seawater import will distract from their proposal, the MOU. We are afraid that focusing only on their plans will push a long-term solution to the Salton Sea crisis further to the back burner. Too much time has already been wasted to allow that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, how do I advance the slides? Sorry.
Can we bring the PowerPoint back up?
Did that advance? Okay, sorry. Okay. Sorry. My name is Chuck Parker, and this morning, I will briefly go over our amendment and point out how water import will actually benefit the North and Perimeter Lake projects that are in the MOU. Throughout our slideshow, there'll be references to documents that are in the packet that we've get, given you. The first document should be the exact wording of the amendment, which is basically, all we're asking for is that water import projects be given thorough consideration when they're evaluating a long-term plan. No money needs to be spent, and no diversion from any other projects. I'd like to talk a moment about the cross-border cooperation that has been worked on by all of these companies that have done these, the excellent work on these plans. One of the next documents should be a page called Cross Border Coordination, which is from the GEI Company, and they list all the different government agencies, Indian tribes, and organizations that they have talked to and worked with in Mexico. Also in your packet, right after that, or one we added this morning, is a letter from the president of the Kukapa Tribe in Baja, California, supporting the project. Some of the projects have negotiated with that tribe to get access, or right-of-way through their property, and they agreed, provided they build a fish farm and install solar fields to help them start their economy better. It's a very poor area. Sorry. Next slide. There's also been extensive support in the United States for water import. The cities of Desert Hot Springs and Palm Desert have also passed our amendment. We have turned in 5,000 signatures of residents of communities near the sea to Assemblyman Garcia, Senator Huaso, and Supervisor Perez's office. There are two documents I want to draw your attention to in the packet, which refer to support on the part of Imperial County Supervisors for Water Import. The first one is an article from the Desert Review in December of 2018, in which it says, quote, "Imperial Su- County Supervisors have said they did not want the option for seawater importation to be taken off the table." And the other article, from November of 2015, from the Imperial Valley Press, also refers to support, they took a vote at that time, supporting seawater in, import as a feasible long-term solution, and they quote Supervisors Ryan Kelly, Michael Kelly, and John Renison, to that effect. The next thing in your packet is a thick package here with a letter from Congressman Juan Vargas and Raul Ruiz on the top, and inside, there are letters from every city in Imperial County, supporting the Binational Water Project, which you'll hear about later. Just quickly, this is a conceptual drawing from the plans for the North Lake, and already they've had to reduce their projected size from 4,000 acres to 883 acres because there's a lack of water, and we believe our ocean water import could resolve that problem. We'll skip this one because we don't have time. The Perimeter Lake idea also has some problems with, their water supply is the Alamo and New Rivers, which are very polluted, and they don't have enough water to sustain the lake. And if they did capture all the incoming water, the central lake would dry up even faster. So I'd like to turn it over now to Art Gertz from Desert Shores. He's a Salton Sea resident, and Vice Mayor of Desert Shores, and a member of the Ecomedia Compass.
Great. Good morning. Thank you for having us. So, as we see before us, the projected exposed playa, and the problem is, the 10-year plan is not making their milestones. Every year, they are falling further behind, not through the best wishes of the state, but in effect, it's just not happening. So what's happening is each year, we're having more and more toxic playa exposed, and I think we understand that shortages of water are a reality in California. As long as we keep running all of our rainfall into the oceans, we're going to have this problem. Well, the good news is, we have unlimited supply of water available to us. It's a big concept, but it is indeed doable. So here we have on this slide, what we have so far is like bringing a watering can to a forest fire, okay? The way to address this problem is to have an inexhaustible supply, sustainable water, which also in the benefit of countering ocean rise. So as we see here, 10-year plan versus Owens Lake. Owens Lake, the taxpayers have paid in excess of $2 billion so far, and this will be a sprinkler farm eternal, and they still get dust storms. That area is not restored in the slightest. They put out 30,000 hay bales, they'll hide a plant behind the hay bales, the next dust storm comes along, it buries the hay bales, buries the plants. My point here is, this is what has happened so far with extreme amounts of money, and that is the result, the problem is, Salton Sea is three times that size, and it's heading in the same direction if we do not work together for a long-term viable solution. Here's the picture, and this is coming to our neighborhoods if we do not act and make intelligent, unilateral, reach across the aisle, decide to work together, because we are all included in this. The people of LA can tell you that the smell of rotten eggs that they got, and they remember this, and that's pretty far away, and that includes all of us here, okay? The sea is not far enough away to where we will not be touched. Mother Nature has a way of reaching out to us and saying, hey, I got problems here that you, the inhabitants, helped create, now it's time to act and help Mother Nature. So in closing, I ask you to consider that ocean water import and the North and South Lake concept, we are not competitors. We are, we're glad, and we sincerely hope that the North and South Lake projects are successful. We're not competing for the same funds, we're not competing with each other, we're not adversaries. We each have our place in restoring and saving the sea, and so, we sincerely hope that they are successful, we would hope, they would hope that wa- ocean water import is successful, and together, we can obtain this, and we can solve the big picture. I thank you.
Now, I'd like to ask Sylvia Montenegro to come up and present a couple of slides. We have more slides. Sylvia is a former mayor of Coachella and the founder of the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. Sylvia?
Honorable members of the City Council of Rancho Mirage, I'm honored to be here before you, and to request your endorsement for the proposal of the import of water from the Ceeo Cortez, for the purpose of increasing the level of water in the Salton Sea. There is no other source of water to bring there, and the reason to increase the level is to cover the silt soil that is now exposed on the playas, and the silt soil is heavily polluted. None of us here, present today, are free of breathing what is in the air already, so it is in our best interests as community to seek a solution. The lake right now is a man-made environmental disaster affecting all of us. Now, what has happened to the Salton Sea? The water level has dropped 18 inches in 2018. The salinity has risen to double that of ocean water. Our fish have died, our waterfowl are dying, other little creatures in the water can no longer live there. They have died that we may live. We need to want to know why they have died, and how we can protect our health and the health of everyone, including the unborn. The dry playa now exposes toxins to the wind, and this is the dry silt soil. As the lake dries, the silt soil is at the surface, and with the wind currents, the silt soil is moved around, and we all get to breathe it. We have there the result of 100 years of farm chemicals, pesticides, herbicides, insecticides, and nitrates, as well as what is sitting on the ocean floor there, which are the remains of the past testing of military weapons. They are there. They are part of what the silt soil pollution that we are breathing is now a very serious matter for all of us.
Okay. Let's let Lilly go. Next, we'd like to introduce Lillian Garcia. She's a tireless researcher. In terms of pollution, she's going to report to you about the pollution, actual elements at the sea.
Just push that to advance. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, and citizens attending. I'm going to basically go over, summarize the pollution at the Salton Sea, and first of all, be talking about the bad pesticides, the metals. I just want to remind you that most of the, most of the pollution that is at the Salton Sea causes cancer, according to the OIA, which is a, you can see the metals listed on Prop 65, and the bad pesticides. I'll also be going into detail in regards to the Salton Sea test base, and give a little history in case if anyone isn't aware. I also would just like to say a statement, according to Water Board staff, which is Region 7 located in Palm Desert, 80% of the pollution in the Salton Sea is from Imperial County, which the 20% is said to be from Mexico, in case if any of you didn't know. So basically, as long as Imperial County continues to be an environmental nuisance, we will continue to have issues at the Salton Sea basin. So for instance, the bad pesticides, according to data from the state and the federal government, they've, they've, they have records, they've done sampling on the fish in the water that contains DDT, DDD, and DDD. They all cause cancer. The New River and the Alamo River are considered, they are impaired bodies of water, according to the USCPA and Region 7. Some of the heavy metals that are in the Salton Sea are chromium, selenium, lead, and uranium. Also lead, which causes cancer, titanium, which also causes cancer. The Imperial Irrigation District has data on the metals, if you'd like to look at that information. They also have information of the air quality. So the Salton Sea test base, I'm just going to quickly summarize a little. According to the Sandia Laboratories, 1,000, 1,880 test units were dropped into the sea, according to records. There's no information regarding the pre-1947 drops that land, target drops, or the 2,500 sack drops into the sea. The Salton Sea test base consisted of a classified project of a fat man and little, little boy atomic bombs. Historical files describe three separate recovery operations conducted at the Salton Sea in late 1960, and over 10,000 pounds were recovered, but the rest remain in the Salton Sea. If you see here with the map that's up here, this map is from the Department of Defense, and it's some of the bomb targets that were done many years ago. But for instance, if you see where the Salton Sea test space is at, if you see the little red square on there, when they do the walkovers, they're only doing it at the Salton Sea test base. They are not doing it around the entire Salton Sea, meaning they still need to evaluate the rest of the Salton Sea basin. So I don't know if you're familiar, but as the water has decreased, the inflow has decreased into the Salton Sea, some of the playa has been exposed already, so there is unexploded ordinance being exposed right now at the Salton Sea test base, which is about three to four miles from Salton City, and also from the Border Patrol checkpoints, which the community is being exposed, and they're breeding these toxics. I'm going to just state something, these records are from the State Water Resources Control Board. A MK6 fly-around radioactive test unit that contained 120, 120 pounds of uranium was lost in the sea. So until today, I still haven't been able to locate the records, if they ever found the uranium. It's just a little idea of what's in the Salton Sea. So we are dealing with bad pesticides, pesticides that contain active ingredient, metals that also cause cancer, and we are also dealing with unexploded ordinance at the Salton Sea. Until today, I still have not seen this issue addressed, and it is, there's nothing written on the 10-year plan, so this is an immediate, an immediate issue that needs to be addressed right away. Congressman Reese has already been informed, Congress, Assembly Garcia, and also the State Water Resources Control Board. If we were to import water, it would help the situation to remain, for the toxics to be underwater, so the, so we won't be breathing all these toxics and stuff. So the next one's going to be on air quality. I, a few of my colleagues, they already mentioned, you know, the, the rotten egg smell, which is hydrogen sulfide. Right now, there's only two hydrogen sulfide monitors in Riverside County, which were provided by South Coast Air, Air District, and the data on their states that they, it has exceeded, exceeded the, the state standard, which is 0.03 parts per million. And I, I know that there is articles too, that have mentioned that in LA, they have smelled the hydrogen sulfide level, just, and, so I'll go quickly into the PM10. PM10 is a, PM10 is like particles, so the PM10 levels at the Salton Sea, according to the Imperial Irrigation District, they have a lot of data, they, they actually have, they've done quite a bit out there, more than the state, in regards to the air quality. So according to their records, they do have data stating that the highest level of PM10 has been 1,872, which is 38 times higher than the state standard, which, the state standard is 50 micrograms per cubic meter. Some of the health issues that this past year, we've been, we've been informed of is, the North Shore community, the children from four to 12 years old are experiencing nosebleeds. Now, the Salton, out in Salton City and Desert Shores, it's the same issue out there. So right now, we have three elementary schools that actually, the kids are having these, these issues at home and at school, which is Saul Martinez, Saul Martinez Elementary School, Seaview Elementary, and there's one more, which I kind of forgot right now, but it's in the eastern Coachella Valley. Another issue that we came across with was, the Border Patrol Union has also experienced a cancer cluster at the New River, which the New River drains into the Salton Sea. Their Border Patrol agents are also having issues at the checkpoints due to the, the air quality issues out there, and it's an everyday thing where they're smelling the hydrogen sulfide. The agents are being exposed to the unexploded ordinance too. The agents do carry a sensor on them, and so, most of the time, according to my informant, is, sometimes vehicles won't be coming by, and the agent's sensor is going on, meaning there's radiation going on somewhere, but they don't know where, so it's like, you know, there's no one coming through the checkpoint, but the sensor is going up. So that's happening at both checkpoints and stuff. So I'm going to be leaving with you guys, three letters. The Border Patrol Union has already requested an epidemiological study. Until today, there has been no epidemiological study done at the Salton Sea basin or in Imperial County. The Border Patrol has requested, officially has requested to Congressman Reese, Assembly Garcia, and all the politicians within our district. As a Salton Sea Coalition member, we have also requested an epidemiological study to Manuel Perez and to the local government.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Lilly's got so much information, she could go on all day. So we all know that the dust storms, sometimes in the summer, blow up this way. Here's a picture of a dust storm here in the Coachella Valley in 2014. The estimated damages if the Salton Sea is not restored by a Pacific Institute study was between $29 and $65 billion, and the estimated benefits if we do restore the sea, this was from a report from the Palm Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau in 2017, entitled to Revitalize Salton Sea: Estimated Economic Benefits of Up to $9 Billion in Saved Visitor Spending, Jobs, and Property Value in Taxes. And then, I'd just like to introduce Feliz Nunez, who's a retired nurse, who'll do four more slides, and, and then we'll close, so thank you. Just push that button to advance.
Good afternoon, good morning, City Council members. Oh, I see. Okay. The, the water import was initially a part of the 10-year plan of the Salton Sea, so yes, we do see it as, still today, we respect that. And they also, three of the 11 proposals for water import were accepted, and you're going to hear about two, two of them today, Cordova and, I'm sorry, GEI and Binational. There's an article by Mark Johnson, talking about declaring the Salton Sea as a watershed and natural disaster in your packet, and his solution is to appoint a federal overseer. What he likes about these plans in general is that clean waters coming in, desalinated waters going out into Colorado to fulfill the agreement of giving water to five states and Mexico. He also criticizes it negatively by saying that the water that's going into the Salton Sea needs to be improved, and none of these plans to bring water from the sea have mentioned that. So the agriculture drainage is very dirty, and that, that has to be addressed. Also, there's, in the plans, unproven technology, and there's also a poor market for salt that's going to be accumulating. So this is how he is an example of leadership, you know, that he examines the plans, what's positive, what's negative, and then proposes alternatives on how to deal with the negative aspects. The next slide is about too many cooks, and he has an article here about the problems that we, we face because there's all kinds, there's local, state, tribal, and federal agencies that are all responsible for the Salton Sea. And so, the, when, some of the problems are that there's a tanglement of all this leadership. The Salton Sea Authority has not been able to, to do anything since 1993, that's a quarter of a century. The Torres Martinez was successfully making a wetland, but they forgot to put the liner, and this was done by Tetra Tech. And- And if they had consulted with science, maybe that money wouldn't have been wasted. But also, we've had Professor Timothy Bradley from UC Irvine say that they're there as the people to consult as, for science and that the Salton Sea Authority and those responsible didn't consult with him until after the fact. They first, they do the plans and they didn't, then they tell him what the plans are so that the science committee doesn't have anything to contribute. The long-range committee that was put together in August of 2018 has yet to meet to talk about water import. Further steps to, to resolve for any plan that goes on is that we, we would like for the Salton Sea to be called a disaster, either man-made or natural, whatever works, it doesn't matter. We also request aid from the polluters, which is the Department of Agriculture, because most of the pollution is from farming, the Department of Defense because of the munitions waste that lie in, at the bottom of the sea and are being exposed, and the Department of Energy because they use that as a testing area. Also, we propose that eminent domain be used where needed to stop the squabbling in the courts of who can do and how much and all this. The next one is the water import resolution. We find it very difficult to believe that the, we can, the amendment cannot be accepted to the MOU. And it's like almost proposing, well, should we have a resolution that's independently standing to just deal with importing, importation of water? But what we also know is that this long-range plans need to be immediately started, the engineering plans, and that both short-term and long-term plans can go forward. One of the ones that really impressed, we were at the Torres Martinez on March 20th at one of their meetings, and this man from the Correa, which you have in your packet, Restoration, Correa Restoration is, is the article. And they're talking about these plants that actually eat the salt. So immediately, you're dealing with a salt, and these plants can be fed to cows, and it'll stop the, the dust from moving. And also, at the same time, it, for future purposes, it will be restructuring the soil. So I hope that, that the amendment is accepted into the MOU. Thank you.
The sea is drying faster than any of the models suggested. At that March 19 meeting at the Water Board I mentioned before, we sat for four and a half hours at the North Shore Yacht Club at the Salton Sea. Those of you who've been there know they have a wall of picture windows overlooking the sea. Normally, at this time of year, you would see hundreds, no, thousands of birds in that time. I counted five, four ready ducks, and one flying seabird in the distance, likely an egret. One of the board members suggested that the birds have disappeared. During public comment, I stated that it was not magic, they had not disappeared. There are more than 400 species of birds that are dependent on the Salton Sea for their last remaining major stopover during annual migration or wintering. They're dependent on the sea's fish to eat two to four times their body weight before making the next leg of their journey. The fish are gone because the sea is more than two times as saline as the ocean. Only two drains into the sea have fry been seen. No new fish in the body of the sea at all. Those birds likely died. Talk about Canary in the Coal Mine. Why are we going to Riverside County with this issue when much of the problem is from Imperial County? Because the problems affect us all, and frankly, the cities of Riverside County have more pull in Sacramento than in Washington. If you guys demand it, the state will pay much more attention. Two of the three firms selected by Jerry Brown from Eleven who submitted RFI requests to go forward are gonna speak next. Let me just say, it's way past time to look into anything that can turn this crisis around. It's time to work together, not against each other. We contend that we should be able to do both the North Shore and the 10-year plan and the sea-to-sea at once. We need to be thinking long-term, not just short-term, and we can't put the long-term and wait and see what happens with the short-term projects. We have the capacity to do multiple compatible thoughts at one time, and they are compatible. For the benefit of the sea, the benefit of the environment, and the health of our neighbors, let us work together. If you've been, you don't break. Thank you.
Frank, is that your presentation?
Yes.
I have a question, if you'd like to come up for a minute. Chuck?
Chuck, yeah.
Could you give us, in as brief a term as you could, the, the actual opportunities that the coalition has, what they would like seen done to this property, and any recommendations?
Well, the first thing we would like, since the Salton Sea Authority and Riverside County have sent their MOU around to the cities here in the valley for a resolution of support, we would like to see the cities add an amendment that would designate that the MOU supports also water import as part of the long-term solution, so that we don't lose sight of the long-term solution. And other than that, we, we are all volunteers, so we focus mostly on public outreach. And we're welcome, we're happy to go to any community and talk to them about the problem. We think that, what we emphasize at the ending is really important, that we're encouraged by the Water Board meeting two weeks ago where they said the state is taking steps to reorganize themselves so that they can have more accountability year to year and get projects done, because things have been sort of tangled up. And we believe that hopefully that will, what will emerge is a unified leadership where, you know, the leadership is, is, is in, in the hands of one or two people who have professional knowledge, and all of the projects go together. Because right now, as you can see from the chart in the packet about all the organizations with authority at the Salton Sea, there's quite a few of them. There's state agencies, county agencies, and these special things they created called joint powers authorities. And I think one of the reasons things haven't moved forward is that all those different agencies can't agree on what needs to be done. So that's what we're hoping for.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker, could you come back up for just a second?
Sorry, sorry.
What money is now available for use once somebody says this is our next step forward? It requires payment of money. Do we have money?
Yes.
And to what extent? Do we have? We keep hearing that there's a shortage of money, that there's not enough money to solve the problem and all that sort of thing. How do you address that and what is the money that's available and what can be done now as you see it and possibly as others with whom you co-convent?
Okay. As, as of this moment, there's $280 million that the state has. There was 80 million from Prop 1 for their 10-year plan, $200 million from a bond that was passed last June. So $280 million, their projected cost for the 10-year plan is about $400 million. So they, they're about $120 million short on that plan. Any money for the, either the North Lake or the perimeter lake would have to be raised, and they have their own plan on how to do that, which is, they'll probably go, explain that, which would be from creating an enhanced financing district in the eastern Riverside County and Imperial County and then trying to borrow money on a bond. The, the long-term projects, each of these companies will probably mention, they have different proposals for how to finance it. GEI quickly says that since the state of California took responsibility for restoring the sea in 2003, they should finance Phase 1 of their project, which is bringing the water to the sea, which is about a billion and a half to $2 billion, and then that the federal government should finance their, their desalination project to, to add about 2 million acre feet of water, freshwater to the Colorado River system, because the federal government has obligations, treaty obligations to that. And the other company is going to pursue a combination of public and private financing, but they can explain that better than I can. All those are problems that have yet to be solved. But we're not, we're not here trying to get any of the money that's been allocated for the 10-year plan or, or the North Lake or the perimeter lake. We, we understand that this ocean water import is, is in the very beginning stages and that the funds would have to be raised along the line. But I own, myself, I have the opinion that, well, for example, California has a, I don't know, $14 billion surplus in their budget, and the airport renovation in LA is $9 billion. And so stadium, football stadium, $3 billion. People of California, if they're convinced that this needs to be done, can do it. We have the money. We just need the political will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Talking about political will, has the new governor taken any position on funding for the sea?
He has made statements, which I find very encouraging. He has said that he sees the importance of solving this problem and that he's, and he's the one who's, I believe, mandating the Department of Natural Resources and the State Water Board to, they're, they're hiring new people, they're reorganizing their efforts so that, you know, for example, at the Water Board meeting, they said that, you know, they had an annual reporting obligation and the reports were not very specific, and sometimes they were late. So, and there was nothing in the reports that, that would, would talk about how do you correct it? If you don't make your goal, what are you gonna do to correct it? This was pointed out at the meeting. So the guy, and he's also, you know, said he wants to initiate a new office of economic and cooperation with Mexico. So I believe that he's doing things that will make this all more possible, but it's in, still in the beginning stages.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Question down here?
Yes. You know, it, this is all very obviously concerning to so many of us. There was quite an article ways back in regard to the Salton Sea. Feds reassure IID path forward for Salton Sea. All sides are working collectively to cross the final line before March 19. When you add up the agencies on this sheet and you add up all the agencies involved in this article, and then you have someone making the comment that this is a welcome thawing of the polarization between our agencies. Agreed, IID General Manager Henry Martinez at the meeting. Neither Martinez nor other district officials responded to requests for comment on Monday. You've got probably 25 or more agencies that are going to be participating in whatever decision-making occurs. If, if it's been frozen and the attitudes have been uncooperative toward each other, how do you plan to put all these agencies together and come up with a viable plan?
Well, I, I would ask you all to read the article, couple of the articles in the packet from Mark Johnson. He's a part of our coalition. He's retired engineer with the Coachella Valley Water District, and he has a lot of knowledge about these kinds of problems. I can tell you from trying to do research on the Salton Sea that this thing, this problem will give you a headache, you know? And how to solve that is, is, is definitely a big headache. But the suggestion he has made is that, that if we can get this declared a federal disaster and have the federal government appoint an overseer over this problem who has the authority to cut through these kinds of log jams, that that might be one way forward. He, he gave us an example that a few years back, I'm sure you all remember, the Duroville Trailer Park down in Thermal, and they were going, Mark went to the court in Riverside. They were trying to resolve that problem. And the court, the judge in the court, you know, people came in and testified that it was gonna, there was the Native America Torres Martinez tribe, there was the owner of the thing, there was a Coachella Valley Water District, there were different people there. And they, they were saying, well, we need to, you know, we're probably gonna have to go back and it'll take six months to work this thing out. And Mark said, the judge says, we're not gonna take six months. We're all going back in my chambers right now and we're gonna work this out. And he said they did. And he said it all depended on having that one person who was willing to take leadership. So I don't have the answer, but hopefully people who, who know more than I do can figure it out. Hopefully, people like you can make a contribution.
I'd like to have Rodney Smith come forward now from the Bynational Water Group.
Good morning. Let's see. My name is Rodney Smith, and in full disclosure, my firm Stratocan Inc. worked with Shepherd Mullen in the 1980s to get you a property tax base, right after you were incorporated. So it's great to be back.
Are you with Shepherd Mullen? Are you an attorney?
No, no, I'm an economist with Stratocan, and Shepherd Mullen was the law firm, and they used my work on the implementation of Prop 13, which ultimately led to the settlement of your property tax. We are not engineers. The Bynational Water Group is actually a collection of scientists and water professionals. As I just mentioned, I'm an economist. We've got a former congressman. We've got hydrogeologists. We have engineers as well. And what we did is, is that I've been involved in the Colorado River matters since the early 90s on behalf of the Imperial Irrigation District, negotiations, the San Diego Deal, the quantification settlement agreement, and Ms. Mayor Protem negotiating with 39 parties, did the quantification settlement agreement together. And we also structured the 15-year window to give the state of California the time to figure out what they were gonna do. In 2013, excuse me, 2014, my co-manager Larry Fanning, who's a scientist, he and I were looking at Lake Elsinore. And I asked Larry, how did they restore Lake Elsinore? And he said, this is what they did. So I said, Larry, how do we restore the Salton Sea? That was the beginning of our work, starting in 2014, and time flies, five years later. And this, and we have been putting our own sweat equity in. We do have investors now behind this, and we'll go through the structure of our approach. Our concept is based on proposed public-private partnerships with the state of Baja and the Natural Resources Investment Center and the Department of Interior. Our consultation started during the Obama administration with the Department of Interior that has left a big file for the successor for that investment center who has yet to be appointed, okay? So in the interim, Congressmen Vargas and Ruiz have sent a letter to ex-Department, Secretary of Interior Renkey, and will soon be getting a letter to, to the new secretary when he's confirmed, to put a priority to pick up on that public-private partnership. In 2010, I was asked by a friend in the Obama administration that there was people in Baja interested in bynational cooperation, especially on water mass, water matters, and they, and they offered to make an introduction to people in the Mexican government, who, with whom I've been working with since 2010, on everything from planning for restoration of the Mexicali Valley, deal, dealing with Tijuana sewage, as well as the Salton Sea. I understand that there's skepticism about Mexico, and I invite you to look at Senator Oweyso in late 2017, held an information hearing on his Committee on Mexico-California Affairs in Imperial Beach, and then- And then federal Senator Ernesto Ruffio presented on behalf of Governor Vega, a three-point plan for bi-national cooperation, which linked addressing the Tijuana sewage issue with drought relief and the Salton Sea. So, that's the foundation of our public-private partnerships with both sides of the border. Our approach is private sector. My team says we're not looking for a tax dollar period. We have to deal, we have to generate a project that the economic benefits that people are willing to pay for carry the freight. If we can't do that, we're a failure. So, our approach is the project address is borne by the private sector. As it relates to the Salton Sea, the state of California could purchase delivered water as part of its plan for the Salton Sea. They have to deal with how to coordinate what volumes of water, timing and location of delivery as they interface with a 10-year plan, with a North Lake proposal, a South Lake proposal or anything else. That's their job. We would negotiate delivery of water under mutually agreeable terms. We're an infrastructure program that includes saline groundwater wellfields. We are not taking water directly from the Sea of Cortez. There is a UN biosphere at the end of the Mexican Delta that extends, and we'll show you a map how far it extends. So we're not into direct ocean intake. In fact, we're using the preferred method of the California Coastal Commission for any form of interface with, with the sea. We of course have a pipeline system, desalination plants and a regional brine management program. As we say here, if we're successful, if we can put together economically viable project, this would address declining sea elevations, the degradation in environmental conditions, salinity, loss of habitat and loss of economic development opportunities. Our job is to bring water in. Everyone else's job to figure out what to do with it for their most long-term interests. Here's a brief overview. As you see down at the bottom is the line where there's the biosphere. Our wellfields are inland off the ocean. They are interconnected to the Sea of Cortez, hence they're inexhaustible supply, but we're not touching the Sea of Cortez directly. Our regional brine line system goes down south to San Felipe, where we take advantage of 25-mile submerged pipeline using proprietary technology out of Paris partner and, and will disperse the brine along with ocean currents out to the Pacific Ocean. Here was a conceptual allocation of potential project water. We just decided to put this into our submission to request of information from the state. Might as well put something on the table. If the state of California wants to open negotiations of what should be the delivery schedule, we're open, but we just said, let's put together an example on. So the objective would be, especially given the free fall in the elevation of the Salton Sea for now almost 15 years, which someone pointed out the scientists can't explain. We thought it may make sense to bring a slug of water in early million acre feet a year for the first three years and then start tapering down to, by year six, you're down to 350,000 acre feet a year. We'll show you a chart of what that does to the elevation in a minute. Our whole point is, this project is multipurpose. It's not only to provide water to the sea, but also to provide feedstock for the desalination program to create new water supplies for drought relief in the Colorado River Basin. We have, as you'll see in a minute, two revenue streams here. As you can see, this is a sketch of what will happen with no action, the continued acceleration of decline in the sea. And by year three of the project, whenever that would be, depending on when the state wants to act, you can see we can start bending the curve. We have been in consultation with Imperial Valley landowners about our target elevation and there's concerns about whether or not minus 227 is the right number or should it be minus 228 to deal with flood risk management? Those are things that certainly we're open to addressing. The key thing, and this gets to the public health issues you've heard about, is that we can bend the curve about the exposure of playa. The one thing since I've been working in Mexico since 2010, I like to remind all Americans is the public health risks don't stop at the border. The cancer rates you've heard about, the asthma rates and everything are in Mexicali Valley as well. And it's also, those public health risks are also of concern to the state of Baja. We can bend the curve on salinity. We can't solve that without follow-on reclamation programs. So I'm not here to tell you that we have a silver bullet. We can deal with the two to the three major challenges, but there'll have to be further on reclamation programs to further address the salinity issue in the sea. The state of California asked us to prepare cost estimates. We've been working on this project for now four years before we submitted this in 2018. This reflects actually some preliminary bids from vendors. It's not just rule of thumb from engineers. In terms of this $8 billion tag, keep in mind that that's for both a desalination program as well, as well as a water delivery. That's not the whole thing for the Salton Sea. That's the whole thing for the multipurpose project. And what you can see is basically in round numbers, the, the schedule we gave you for delivery of the sea, that would be an obligation, roughly $150 million a year in today's dollars by the state of California. Okay, where does a project come, funding come from? Well, we put together our sweat equity for a few years and we're now raising what is known in the private world as venture A, a Series A financing from investors to continue our work trying to put together not only further development of our technical work, but also negotiations with parties. If, once we get into contingent agreements, that will trigger a Series B financing round with our investors to get the job done up to operations, excuse me, up to project financing, which would be a Series C. So what you're going to see, there's, as common in project development, you're going to have a series of financing. Notice this is all private sector. As someone had, I think as Chuck had said, we have never coveted the 80 million down payment of the 10-year plan. We don't covet anything of the 400 million of the plan. We don't covet a nickel of the north, you know, lake project or anything else. We believe that a viable project has to stand on its own and it's our responsibility to interface with capital markets to raise the money for us to do, do our project. And for what, so what's an economically viable project? The bulk of the revenue will have to come from the sales of desalinated water. We'll also have contract payments from the state of California. And obviously they'll have to cover our full costs of our capital investment, O and M, replacement costs, and yes, a royalty payment structure to the state of Baja. This gives you a sense of, when we submitted a year ago, this could be the schedule of development, starting up top of the agreement with the state of California, finalization of public-private partnerships with the state of Baja and the Department of Interior, assembling a project consortia with Mex, on the Mexican and US side, buyer's agreements for potable water and, and on and on. I will call your attention to the treaty minute for a project that will be needed. Secretary of Economic Development Carlo Benfante and I have been meeting for over three years with the SEALA Commissioner and IBWC, the National Boundary Water Commissioner, and those are the people that will have to implement the treaty minute. They've said, do your project, come back and we'll help you draft your minute. Then of course you'll have standard, you know, standard construction process. The state sent us back some questions after they had selected this as one of the three finalists. First of all, what's the benefits to Mexico? As I said before, the public health crisis doesn't stop at the border. Do people understand there's 1.2 million residents Mexicali Valley? The public health challenges are there as well. That I think has gotten state of Baja potentially interested in coming to the table. Also, quite frankly, we've proposed a royalty structure with them that will generate significant income streams for them that they can capitalize in international capital markets to fund their, their own infrastructure and economic development program. Currently, the Minister of Economic Development does recruitment of industries from, from around the world. He, he creates 100,000 jobs a year, new jobs, from foreign direct investment. They need to invest in infrastructure to make that successful and they don't have the funds otherwise to do so. So their own interest in further developing their own economic, their own economic structure is bringing them potentially to the table. Similarly, Mexicali Valley has a huge brine management problem. They're interested in seeing solutions to that and, and we can create improvement in water quality. What is the salt disposal process? As I said, south of San Val, San Felipe, the 12-foot diameter brine disposal pipeline to shore connector south of San Felipe. We're going to use a proprietary flexible underwater technology out of France that carries water approximately 25 miles offshore to the Wagner Basin. We're using these inductor and bubbler technologies that are currently being used throughout the world for desalination projects to improve, to lessen environmental footprint of brine. And then, as I said earlier, this will be picked up in the prevailing current system and brought, brought towards the Pacific Ocean. We have been in consultation not only with the fisheries people, federal government of Mexico, but also SESSC, which is an incident-based natural, national resource center that the, that the government goes to for scientific advice. State also asked us, how do you get the right of way? Well, in Mexico, we say, we're telling the state of Baja, in exchange for your royalty structure, you're going to be responsible for taking the lead in regulatory approvals in Mexico as well as securing right of way. Use your own powers. We're not going to bring a bunch of US consultants into Mexico to deal with these issues. We're going to incentivize the state of Baja to have an economic stake in meeting their obligations. Similarly, in our discussions with the Department of Interior, we've said the same thing. We, we spent extensive time with the, with the Trump transition team on this project. And President Trump, once he turns to infrastructure, he will designate about 50 high priority projects. And we are on the list. And we will have a White House staffer that I can call 24/7 if I'm being slowed down so that, you know, President Trump's objective, getting federal review done within 24 months, if they're not admitting the thing, they're not promising approval, they're just promising a schedule. Energy sources. Sarajevo is the largest geothermal resource in Latin America. It is burdened with 1960s technology and neglect. The actual production from Sarajevo has fallen to probably half of its capacity. The, the federal CFE is interested in turning that around. So we have potential for use of geothermal resources for our power needs south of the border. Similarly, north of the border, as you all know, you have geothermal here. Initially, Callon Energy had expressed an interest in partnering with us if we could get the water to the border because they have a geothermal that they would like to use for desalination. They have moved on on their business model, but we remain true to ours. So what would the Salton Sea look like? We have increased stabilization of elevation, elimination of the playa, exposed playa, and we're bending the curve on salinity. Our project team that we submitted, you're going to have to look, get a little microphone, get a magnifying glass out. But what we did is we listed on the top all the entities that are involved on our project team and what their responsibilities are. My firm Straticon is one of the co-managers of this. I do the economics, negotiation and strategy. G3 Soilworks takes the lead on science. We have Stan Tech on engineering. Norris Leo on desalination policy. Via Marina, that's our French partner on their technology. ZGlobal on north of the border geothermal. Dyer Energy, which is a Mexican-based consulting firm on geothermal in Mexico. The president is the first commissioner of the Baja Energy Commission, so is very familiar with Baja energy sources. And we have a couple of economic consulting firms on economic issues, including the economic impact of our project, as well as Epcor, which is a Canadian-based infrastructure firm to design, build and operate of infrastructure in the United States. So conclusion, delivering a saline groundwater, not seawater, saline groundwater into the Salton Sea could help address the issues you've heard about today. The key thing is our proposal is a joint use project because I really think you have to bundle the, the joint use of this infrastructure because you want to have a slug of water delivery. You want to taper it off for stabilization. Well, you got to use that infrastructure for another, you know, purpose. And we believe the joint use of this infrastructure can provide water to the state of California at the lowest cost possible. Thank you for your consideration. Now I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I do have a question because you talk about geothermal and that process. And I don't know what your research has shown, but I know some people are concerned about the connection between geothermal energy and earthquakes. And because it's right at the San Andreas Fault, maybe you could tell us a little bit what you have found?
We are very mindful of that issue and we're concerned of that. In fact, I can't remember, I wish, my co-manager Larry Fanning, he couldn't come today, last night, emergency came up, wish Larry was here because he'll tell you which project was part of proposed Salton Sea restoration that was right over the San Andreas Fault. So when we looked at that, we were saying, why are you building over the fault? So you're absolutely right. You have to have risk assessment. If you spend any time with me, risk assessment, risk assessment, risk assessment. What do we know? What we don't know? What do we need to learn more about? So, so that is one issue. We believe, we haven't finished all our work. We think the earthquake risks out of Sarajevo are less. And if that proves to be the case, we may be very heavy on Sarajevo geothermal for our project.
Any questions down there, Dana? Please. I'm not quite clear, is yours a public-private coalition or are you totally planning on funding this through either private means and perhaps with some Mexican government involvement?
Well, first of all, Bi-National Water Group is a California LLC. Let's start there, okay? We have a Mexican affiliated entity called Baja Infrastructure Resources. We're private, okay? We envision getting into private-public partnerships with the state of Baja, which would basically say, work with us to get available water from saline groundwater basins and deal with the permitting and right-of-way issues. In exchange for that, we'll give you a negotiated royalty. That would be that public-private partnership. We're not asking the state of Baja to put up any money upfront. Similarly, with the Department of Interior, our discussions have been, why don't we do a partnership? Will you help facilitate us in approvals? Because the majority of the land north of borders is BLM land, okay? And, and again, assist us in regulatory approvals. We're not necessarily asking Congress to appropriate money. What's going to happen is between what the state of California is willing to step up and willing to pay for, plus what the water users that I'm talking to, what they're stepping up and willing to pay for water, is that sufficient to finance the project? If the answer is yes, we will close our agreements. And if the answer is no, we're going to say we wasted our time. Because I'm too old to look for government money. Takes too long. It's, it's too, it's too little and it's too late. At least, that's what the record shows.
Let me go back to the issue of taking Sea of Cortez water, bringing it in. I think that's part of what the Coalition Group are supporting as well.
Right. I think they're sorting, I apologize, but I think they're just asking for it to be considered.
Yeah. Well, right now, that's, that's a big first step.
Right. That's the first step.
Are you two working together or are you in conflict at any point where you and the Coalition are taking opposite perspectives and views and asserting them publicly?
Well, Chuck Parker reached out to me, the email, two weeks? Well, Chuck Parker reached out to me, the email, two weeks, two weeks ago. She said, we saw your presentation last October, this is what we're up to, this is what, if you'd be willing to tell about your proposal. And they said to me, they're just wanting to be sure that pursuit of the North Lake doesn't get everyone thinking they've solved the problem and would like to have an amendment, which is, by the way, as someone said, if you go to the 10-year plan, there's a paragraph, I think on page 17, about sea importation, even the 10-year plan. So my understanding is they want to just keep that alive. But I'll let Chuck speak for his coalition.
But you're essentially trying to work together as much as possible, I assume?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, anyone who wants to reach out and say, we would love to be sure that your project as well as Mike Clinton's project, because we believe in competition. Anyone who reaches out to us and says, we want to be sure you guys get a fair hearing, hey.
With respect to the Seaford issue and that, what do you see as the three major issues? I think to laymen such as myself, it sounds like it has a great potential of bringing saltwater into the sea. And I'm wondering, what are the major objections to that or what are the areas to accomplish that kind of an approach that you and the others are working on? How realistic is it and is that going to be so costly as to make it prohibitive? What?
Okay, I think the terms, if I may break into three answers. First answer is I think the major issues are anything with any other water project, wherever they're located. What's the impact of your use of the source of the water, moving it somewhere else? And then, especially for us who talk about it's essential to have brine management as part of the overall plan, what is the impact of your brine management strategy? Those are the big environmental questions. In terms of cost, as I said, for the slug of water that we had in our example, and given our cost structure, where we're not going to ask the state of California to pay anything for desalination because the people who buy the water have to pay for that, not asking the state of California to pay for any infrastructure is not used for the delivery of water to them, the delivery of water to the feed plants, that has to be paid for by that, by separating all that, we're looking at probably an annualized cost of around $150 million a year to get the sea to the condition that we're showing here. Please understand, we have not finished our work. This is our current assessment, okay? Until we have someone come to the table who wants to engage in serious negotiations, it's hard for us to pull down investor money to do work in a vacuum, okay?
What's the first step that you have to accomplish with somebody else in order to get that money? What are you going to do tomorrow to accomplish that objective?
Well, I'm in discussions with potential water users right now because we have potential water users in the basin that are now stepping up because of their concerns about the shortfall of water in the Colorado River Basin. We are initiating preliminary discussions. That's getting me, my investors happy about the desalination program. If and when the state of California tells us what their next step is on how they're going to deal with the three proposals, you know, we're sort of saying that's on the, a little bit on the back burner. Right now, to be fair, I did say earlier that through Senator Ruffio, testimony before the state senate information hearing on California-Mexico affairs in late 2017, the state of Baja had a trilogy, a three-legged school on binational cooperation, addressed Tijuana Seals issues. That is being done. I'm helping Baja do that to deal with drought relief. The legislature in Baja just passed last week the final legislation to allow the Rosarita Beach Desal Plant to proceed. So the drought relief out of Rosarita Beach is on schedule. They also said interest in cooperating on the Salt and Sea. Governor Brown, in his communication with Governor Vega, did not make that a priority. There's evidence that I believe Governor Newsom could be different. And the tea leaves I see are too. First of all, Wade Profoot, who's now the Secretary of Natural Resources, was over at the Water, what, Education Foundation or whatever it was, where he had priority on the Salt and Sea. So I got to believe that's, and that's, to be fair to his predecessor, he also wanted to address the Salt and Sea. It's just that I think at the governor's level, you know, Jerry Brown was on twin tunnels and other things, you know, that you only have a bandwidth, right? Well, Newsom has scaled down the tunnel project and he's trying to, what, change the organization of the state on the Salt and Sea. So I'll sit around, south of the border, with a tequila, and we'll read the tea leaves from Governor Newsom.
Who in the governor's office is the lead person on the subject of the Salt and Sea?
I don't know, but Bruce Wilcox is here, who'd be authoritative source on that.
You don't oppose government?
Oh, no.
Government money for any aspect?
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't turn down any government, but it's not in my plan. Because, you see, I want to get something done because, to be honest, I'm going to channel, was that Peter Finch from Network years ago? At least we're the right cohort to understand what I'm talking about. When, on behalf of IID, at 3:00 in the morning, negotiating with Bob Hertzberg and later Richard Katz to give fouling 15 years in full mitigation to the sea for the state to solve this, and I could see by 2014 where it was going, I was mad as hell. And I just came to the conclusion that we need to mix this up. One of my main flaws is I have a PhD in economics from the University of Chicago, so I believe in competition and innovation. So the Binational Water Group was fun, as I'm sure Mike could tell you probably what got them going on trying to do their own project. You need entry of new players sometimes, you know, into a space. If the existing players aren't getting something done, sometimes you need entry of new groups. Not necessarily that they'll solve it or they'll be the savior, but it will change the dynamics. And I think by allowing the entrant of new ideas, you can create, I think, more incentive for people to get something done. Because at the end of the day, people have a choice, do you want to move forward or be left behind?
So is it an acute issue for the state of Baja?
I think what's an acute issue is public health and raising money through royalty agreements to help fund their economic development and infrastructure program.
Is that a yes? You think it is an acute issue for them?
Oh, yeah, yeah. As I say, Carlo Bifonte, he's bringing in about direct foreign investment, 100,000 new jobs a year. That may not sound much to the state of California, that's pretty big for the state of Baja. They know that they need to build so many more new power plants, they've got to deal with their own water issues. They have to create the infrastructure to support the recruited foreign direct investment.
Is the importation of water from the Seaford water, is that a state issue or is that a Mexican government, a total governmental issue?
It's both. There would be some permitting required from what they call Canagua and their Enseminet, their environmental agency. But what I do is I have the governor of Baja fly down to Mexico City to talk to those ministers. I don't do that myself because they're incentivized from.
Do you get the feeling or do you have specific knowledge as to whether the government of Baja and the people working in that area with respect to the importation of Seaford's water, that they are anxious and eager to keep this moving forward or is it?
I think right now they're cautious because of the fact that Brown administration sent signals wasn't a priority. I think that dampened their enthusiasm, which is right now, if you scratch the leadership of the state of Baja, they're working on the Tijuana sewage issue. They want to solve a stress between California and Baja. And also, the Rosarita Beach project is now going to be proceeding. Right now, that's their priority. I think they look right now that we'll have to see what's the interest of the Americans. I'll have to say one thing.
Is our priority to get them to consider this to be an essential and important issue for both sides of the border?
I'll say one thing, the release of the request for information, which was in December of?
2018.
Yeah, no, 17, 2017, because our response was in March of 2018. That got huge traction. If and when the state of California publicly announces what's their next step on the further assessment of three proposals and just says, whatever it is, it's assessing, it's doing something, that will be a good signal to the state of Baja to put that up the agenda. But if instead, they hear out of the United States that we still don't know what the follow-up is on the request for information, and geez, you know, it doesn't seem to be much interest north of the border, although Chuck's group is going to speak loud to them that what they're advocating. I think that's what you need to do. In some sense, long-term plans require a long-term strategy. It's a marathon, not a sprint, right? And so right now, I think from the state of Baja's perspective, I think you've got to think of what are the signals you're sending? And the signals aren't that, geez, we would love to work together, no. The signals are someone's actually advocating through a resolution or something that they're willing to consider. And then through the leadership of the state of California, they can say what the state's pathway is. That, I think, would motivate. Now, one thing you got to understand is, how many people know what's happening July 1 this year in Baja? They have an election, okay? Governors have term limits down there. A governor serves six years. So we're going to have a new governor soon. And so I don't anticipate getting anything done between now and July 1 on this issue. What I will tell you, all the different candidates have been briefed on this.
Some have been more persuaded than others?
I think right now, two of the three, I think, are very open to this. And the third one is just because of their ideology. They're nationalists.
And then the public opinion polls, where does the third one lie?
I'm not an expert on Mexican polling. Right now, I think it's a third, a third, a third. That's the last poll I saw. But if, I stayed at Agua Calente last night because I didn't want to drive this morning. So, you know, you'd be in the sports book and I guess we can, you know, two out of three wouldn't be too bad, you know? It's better than zero out of three or one out of three, isn't it? But we'll see. I think the one thing, the last thing I'll say, working with Mexicans since 2010, some of the suspicion I've heard about from here or about, can you get anything done with the Mexicans? Yeah, I can sit down in Mexico and they say, Rod, how in the heck do we get anything done with the Americans? It's almost like, it's the same issue. It's all about the other side. That's what led, I worked with Senator Huaso to set up that informational hearing that was done in November of 2017 because it broke the bread. The day before, we had senior people from the Baja government, Commissioner from Sela, myself, and others sitting down with the committee members. It was the first time people started to sit down together. Because no one can see a pathway, and if you can't see a pathway, it's hard to figure out what to do, right? And so I think, it may be, Bruce can speak to this better than I can, but I found it interesting, six weeks later after that hearing, the request for information came out. It may have been no cause nor effect, I don't know, but. Didn't hurt, right. So I think that's what you need to think through in all your resolutions. What are you signaling into whom? Because this community is going to be watched. I will have to say, the state of Baja is very impressed with Chuck Parker's group. They've told me that's the best news I've given them in a year. Said, you mean you have a cohesive local group of residents not getting paid, who passionately are investigating this issue, and they're sitting there willing to spend their time petitioning their governments to talk, and, you know, this is what they're asking for? That's probably after the RFI, that's the most positive signal that's been sent out of the United States to the people I know in Mexico, so.
One additional question. You've talked a lot about this being long-term and it looks like a lot of the issues are really short-term. Salinity increasing, the level of the sea dropping, bird die-off. How are your plans that you're working on right now going to try and resolve the other current problems that we have day to day?
Great question. That's why we started with a slug of water coming in rather than having it dribbled in over time. Because if you dribbled in, if you don't start big soon enough, you're coming in, I guess after the fire has burned down the, you know, the trees, you know, in that earlier slide. So that's where I think collaboration with the state, that we view ourselves as coming to the table not to substitute against anything, it's how to coordinate and how to be able to answer that question. Right now, we believe, the sooner you can get the water in the greater quantity to start with, probably the better the solenoid is going to be. We have our scientists can talk about what they think the impacts are, they're willing to sit down with, you know, whoever the scientists are, the state or the authority or whatever, to get a consensus on this.
What was the name of the person who you mentioned was working with or nearby to the governor?
Well, actually, he was the federal senator from Baja to Mexico City. His name's Ernesto Ruffio. And if you go onto our website, which is imaginatively called binationalwatergroup.com, and click on the prospects for binational cooperation, you'll have his five-minute speech from that hearing.
What is that address again?
Binationalwatergroup.com.
Binational Water.
Binationalwatergroup.com. Just click on our work, go down Potential for Binational Cooperation. We also have on that page our public submission as well as our PowerPoint slides. We've also posted a challenge in 2016 after the state's rollout of the 10-year plans. I was a guest of that tour of Senator Huaso and I wrote a long blog piece. And the title was, Why is the Salt and Sea Over There? Because the elevation declines that we've experienced were not anticipated. The IID San Diego deal was structured with a mitigation obligation to fully mitigate the impact of the transfer for the sea for 15 years. I know, I was in those negotiations, I ran the spreadsheet, so I got firsthand knowledge on those expectations. During that day, I talked to everyone who I knew when we put together that deal, and I said, does anyone understand why the sea has fallen so much when we had fully mitigated? And the answer was no. And in that blog piece, you're going to see a plea that we better understand the causes of what's going on as we try to solve this. Because in my, as you say, I've been around a bit. In my experience, if we don't understand the causes of problems we're trying to solve, solving them may be a little harder, okay? And so, and then I'll have to say, our, I just recently blogged picking up on the LA Times editorial. I'll have to say I couldn't resist. So you'll see that there as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for being here today.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Next question.
Yeah.
What would you suggest that a small city that's somehow in the dust zone, what would you suggest be their next or next couple of steps that they should do?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm violating a protocol, but consider their amendment would be a good idea. Second is, I would form a coalition of all the cities here. Go with your partners. Go bottom up. Go bottom up. Desert Hot Springs, right here, here. Cathedral City, you know, Bob Desert, you know them all. I would just sweep the Coachella Valley. What I'm doing on the Tijuana sewage situation, I've created a non, a binational NGO of Mexican and US interests who want to solve the sewage problem. I've gone around, I'm getting the city of San Diego, I'm getting all the South Bay cities, I'm getting the Port Authority, I'm getting all those in to sign in to a cooperative effort to put pressure on the US government to solve the. to put pressure on the US government to solve the issue. So, yes, a city can do something, you don't have to have it consume your life, but just form a coalition. All of a sudden, when you talk to Jeff Stone, and by the way, I think Jeff is a supporter of considering the Salton, the importation process, well, I'll let him speak for himself. But your Assemblyman, your Congressman, speak it. Gavin Newsom, if you have a coalition of cities on a common theme, it doesn't, you don't have to work that hard, you, but that's the best way. If I was your city manager, that's what I'd tell you to do, okay? I'm not your city manager, sorry, but...
For the council's information, we have four more presenters, so I think out of respect for the other people in attendance, I think it's time to move on to the next presenter.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, next speaker is an individual who you've heard discuss today, Mike Clinton from GEI Consultants.
I'm Mike Clinton. I'm going to defer to start with my partner, Jeff Harvey, who is our environmental consultant, who actually lives here in the valley.
Good morning. Do you want me to start the presentation?
Yeah.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having us here today. Everybody here in the audience, thank you for coming today. In contrast to the proposal you've just seen, we have a proposal that's similar in many ways and different in some other ways, and we think more comprehensive in that it addresses the Salton Sea and all of the problems in the Salton Sea, and resolves the chronic shortage known as a structural deficit of water supply on the Colorado River. And our team is made up of Mike Clinton, together with GEI Consultants, which is an engineering firm, and myself. I've been an environmental consultant here in the desert for the last 30 years, worked on the Coachella Canal and All American Canal lining projects, the QSA Water Transfer and Salton Sea Restoration Program. So, that's our team. GEI is the lead team, with Mike Clinton for project concept and engineering and environmental program management for me. GEI's background, very quickly, over 800 in offices across the nation, in California, a leader in water resources work. They recently were the engineers for the reconstruction of Warville Dam. Many of you may have seen last week on the news that it spilled again for the first time. It is repaired after the calamity that occurred two years ago. And I just mentioned the Coachella Canal lining and All American Canal lining projects in which earthen canals were lined as a means of conserving water, that water that being available to be delivered to San Diego, rather than being lost to seepage in the earth canals. Major projects, major water conveyance projects. Mike Clinton's been here for the last 40 years, was with the Bureau of Reclamation, went to IID as General Manager in 1995 to 1999, was at the heart of the development of the water transfer between San Diego and IID, and all of that then morphing into the Quantification Settlement Agreement. He spent his entire career working on Colorado River management issues, and he considers the sea to be sort of an unfinished business for him. He was at IID at the helm when the transfers occurred, the conditions at the sea that have now occurred, not as was planned, with the 15 years given to mitigate that problem. But what now is a problem still, he believes he could be a part of, and I think he understands the system better than anybody else does, in terms of what, how water moves in IID, Coachella, and from the Colorado River in general. The state of California, when they issued their RFI, they expressly said they wanted long-term solutions to the Salton Sea that also secured California's Colorado River water supplies. So, our approach is that the two are inextricably linked. The Colorado River and Salton Sea have to be solved together. Solving one without the other isn't a solution. It's a part-time, or a short-term Band-Aid approach, and we need to do better than that, something that really solves this problem and solves it in perpetuity. I think I've already talked enough about my qualifications. I'm trying to be fast since we got started so late. So, this is another proposal for binational canal for Salton Sea restoration, and then desalination of water for Colorado River augmentation. Our proposal is similar to Binational Water Group, in that we would import water from the Gulf of California to restore the sea to seawater quality, about 35, 39 parts per million. Right now, it's 60 parts per million salt, so to bring it back down to equivalent of seawater. And we say 225, 230 is probably a better elevation now, because we want to have our project be compatible with the 10-year plan projects that will be spending hundreds of millions of dollars to create habitat around the perimeter of the sea. We're going to try to get a sea elevation that doesn't destroy those, that doesn't inundate those. The second component of the project is to desalinate water to create fresh water. That fresh water would be distributed to IID. IID has 2.8 million acre-feet a year that they use with the Colorado River. Coachella has another 330, going up to 430,000 acre-feet per year. If we can dilute a substantial percentage of their water, bringing them from 600 to 700 parts per million salt down to 150 parts, tremendous water quality benefit for IID and CBWD, and a tremendous volume of water that doesn't need to be delivered from the Colorado River, that can then be made available to other Colorado River users. And it's by that mechanism that we benefit all seven of the basin states, and all of the basin tribes, and Mexico. Mexico has to be a partner in this, and they have to receive benefits, and our proposal does include those benefits. Does the pointer work? Yes. So, the idea is to bring, our idea is in the biosphere, and we've talked to Mexico about whether this is feasible or not. They said they were willing to look at it with us. And it is not to encroach into the biosphere, except an existing Coyote Canal structure here that could be widened, and then we have a 20-foot lift just from tidal lift daily in the Gulf that would get us the first 20 feet of lift, and then from there, pumping water up to the border, a pumping station to get under the Mexico-California boundary. That would be a tunnel system, and then water being dropped down by, from here, it is a 230-foot drop down to the sea. So, by gravity flow to the sea, we can recover some hydroelectric energy generation in that conduit as well, and then a regulating reservoir that brings that water down into the Salton Sea to dilute the sea. A question was asked about, can you do this fast enough, and can we save the sea? And the answer is frankly, no. It's already too late. You've already heard descriptions of the birds are already dying, the fish are already dying. And even if you could start this process tomorrow and have a dream world of cooperation with all the parties that need to cooperate, and all the environmental permitting, and all the engineering design, if that could happen in four years, and then you're building for six years, you're talking about 10 years out. So, it's going, the conditions at the sea at the initial fill are going to be what they're going to be 10 years from now. So, we're going to be recovering the sea more than saving the sea. Once we put that water back, the birds will come back, and once they're, our fish stocked, the birds will have a place to come back. This is an essential part of Pacific Flyway, and they don't have anywhere else to go. They used to fly along the coastline, that's now paved over and called Los Angeles and San Diego. So, this is a vital link, and we will restore that link in the Pacific Flyway. The next part of the plan is to take that seawater out of the sea and into a desal plant, and location of that is to be determined. You know, we're trying to build a lot of linear facilities here in the most seismically active region in North America. So, that's got to be one of the fundamental things that we start with studying, is how do you locate and build these structures, recognizing those seismic hazards? Mike, did you want to go through this?
I can finish this part of it up. One of the real key, let me get over to the microphone, excuse me. One of the real key issues with restoring the sea is the salt load. Now, you know, we bring salt in, tons and tons of salt in from the Gulf. And if you leave them in there, you have a Great Salt Lake, or a Dead Sea kind of a situation. Our proposal has us removing from the Salton Sea the tonnage of salt we bring in from the Gulf, as well as the tonnage of salt that comes in from the New and Alamo and Whitewater Rivers, so that the sea does not continue to get saltier over time, but actually comes back down to a seawater salinity. And the trick to that is taking the water out, up at the north, or the east side of the sea, into a distillation plant up there, and the product water from that distillation plant is basically distilled water, and it goes into the Coachella Canal. And I know there's litigation in this valley by the Cabazans about the water quality, the salt that's coming in from the Colorado River. And this would go to tremendously mitigate that concern. It would reduce the salinity of the water from 600 or 700 parts down into the range of 150 parts per million. So, that's one of the reasons we've tagged a part of that distilled water to go into the Coachella Canal. The other part would go into the IID canals, where the, again, they use Colorado River water, and by giving them distilled water, it improves the quality for their farming and for their cities, it also reduces their call on Lake Mead. The next slide...
I just mentioned the solar array, you're too right.
Oh, okay. Let me talk about this little pumping plant right here. And, you know, I saw a piece from the Pacific Institute that talked about 1,000 feet of pumping. Well, our plan has 100 feet of pumping, and right along the canal alignment, we will have a bank where we can put solar panels, and it's about a 50-megawatt load, and we will put solar panels in to provide that. Basically, through that, our entire project is energized by the moon and the sun. The tidal flap gate here stops the tidal surge, which is 20 feet high, and blocks it so that it stays up where our pumping plant picks it up, and the solar array then picks up the load on the pumping plant, and that's how we get the water all the way by gravity in canals up to the Salton Sea. Where does the water go? Right now, we're looking at a half-million acre-feet to offset the QSA. We're looking at $2-million acre-feet a year for desalination and Colorado River augmentation. We have 100,000 acre-feet a year. New water for Mexico. If I talk to the people in Mexico, what do they want? They want water, and they want water security. They want it so that we don't have variations in their Colorado River supply. Those of you who have watched the Quantification Settlement Agreement may know that yesterday, the US House and Senate approved the legislation for the QSA, the federal legislation, and what that does is, as soon as President Trump signs it, and he says he will do that, what that does is encumbers Mexico with sharing Colorado River shortages that are incurred in the United States. And the current plan is in the year 2000, or 2020, the US agencies, primarily Arizona and Nevada, will reduce their uses by 5%. Well, Mexico, of their $1.5 million entitlement, they will reduce theirs by 5% too. And that's going to increase over time as Lake Mead falls. So, with that in mind, Mexico, as soon as President Trump puts his John Henry on the bottom of that bill, Mexico will encumber through minute 23, 3:23, they will have that obligation as well. We did the engineering on the proposal that's here, that we proposed a year ago to the state. The estimated cost of the Phase 1, which is to bring water into the sea, is 2 to 4 billion. Not very much O&amp;M costs, about 8 million a year because of the pumping plant down in Baja. The Phase 2 cost of distillation plants, and we're using distillation, not reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis gives you a brine stream. Distillation gives you two products, distilled water and salt. And therefore, we don't have to handle a brine stream, but we do have many, many thousands of tons of salt every year to dispose of. So, we've got a slide on here that'll show you. But, you know, the approach that was looked at a year ago, and by the way, I made this proposal five years ago to the Coachella Valley Water District, and it's been evolving since then. It'll probably be $6 to $10 billion by the time we get it done. But as Rodney mentioned, that pales in comparison to what our society is doing to maintain its airport theme. And Rodney mentioned $9 billion for LAX. Salt Lake City Airport is 3.6 billion. Denver International is 4.8 billion. These are with Bs. So, those are the kinds of investments, and for 40 million people and the whole society in the Southwest, to make an investment of 6 to 12 or $10 billion to sustain this society, it's chump change, or Trump change, or whatever you want to call it, but it's not a massive amount of money. Here's what our proposal does to the salinity. You can see what the 10-year plan does, and it takes the salinity up to 200,000 parts per million. That is worse than the Great Salt Lake. Our proposal would bring that salinity down the first four years through the fill, and then from there on, it would go out over time to approach seawater salinity. So, that's the kind of results that we've modeled for our proposal. It'll take some time to get it on. Here's the elevation curve. This slide has it going to 225. As Jeff mentioned, maybe 230 is the better elevation for it, but our next steps would be to go through a public involvement program and crystallize this proposal. The desalination, we've got 100 million tons of salt to dispose of. We'll reduce the volume by marketing some of it. We'll also look at adaptive management disposal. There is a mesquite landfill that's about 45 miles away from where we're looking at for the distillation plant. There's also a large mine there that could handle 50 years of salt. The land disposal is a facility out east of Bombay Beach, that's a pretty nice flat area. Taking it down to the Gulf of California with a slurry pipeline looks to be a very attractive option. And other approaches as technology changes over time. Why do we need to resolve or augment the Colorado River? This is what the situation looked like a year ago when we put our proposal in. Reclamation was looking at 50% shortage of, likely shortage of this year. With the snowpack we've had, that's a little better, it's probably not till next year. And for 20, 20 and beyond, and those shortages affect Arizona, Nevada, and especially Mexico. The next slide shows the, why we think the United States government should fund the distillation work to restore the Colorado River. I've been to many places in my life. Back in the 60s, I was writing computer programs to operate the Colorado River and show where the water went, under different conditions. And we modeled the river supply with the Central Arizona Project, it was in the Congress for Authorization, to show how the river would operate with the Central Arizona Project in operation. Well, we recognized, and Congress recognized, that the demand on the river with the CAP in operation was unsustainable. And so, in 1968, in Section 202 of the CAP Act, the Congress declared that the satisfaction of the Mexican Water Treaty was a national obligation, and they authorized and directed the Secretary... the Secretary of the Interior to put together an augmentation plan for up to 2.5-million acre feet of Colorado River water. You know, it's interesting because someone asked me how that project would be developed with Mexico. Under that same authority, the Yuma Desalting Plant was built. And a drain down to the Santa Clara Slough through Mexico was constructed. And the Bureau of Reclamation paid for all of that with federal funds under this authority. There's no reimbursement from anybody. They paid for the desalination plant at Yuma. They paid for its operations. And there's an agreement with Mexico through the International Boundary and Water Commission, where that canal in Mexico was built with federal funds in the United States. And it is operated by Crenagua, the Mexican Water Resources Organization. They do the O&amp;M on it. But that precedent that was set based on this 1968 Act of Congress is in place and it's already operated. And I was involved in writing the Minutes, Minute 242, for this program and many other minutes for the treaty when I was in the Interior Department. In my last eight years, I was a political appointee in the Reagan administration. And with that in mind, I was involved with international relationships with both Mexico and Canada. And it was a very fruitful time. So with augmentation, IID and Coachella get new, high-quality water to replace the water that otherwise would divert from Lake Mead. Hoover releases would decline by about 2-million acre feet. And Lake Mead would go up about 12 feet a year. Lake Powell, their releases would decline also. And so Lake Powell would go up by about 8 feet per year. That's what the hydrology says. That's what the law says. So from the Colorado River augmentation side, we also, we have as strong of statutory law on the Colorado River as we have in Sacramento for restoration of the sea. There's a broad range of environmental benefits. And I'll let Jeff to talk to them a little bit.
I'll be brief on this because I know that you've heard enough about the environmental. But what I want to emphasize here is that by backfilling the sea, the play is completely covered. And we address that air quality and public health issue 100%, both locally and regionally. And we understand that the region extends down to Mexico. It extends far and wide. As you probably are aware of, people having smelled the Salton Sea as far away as Goleada in past events. So we would have full restoration of the sea and covering of the shoreline. We can then restore the habitat for the migratory birds and other endangered species, some 400 species that use the sea. This is a proposal that restores the Salton Sea, restores the Pacific Flyway, and benefits the entire Colorado River Basin. And as Mike pointed out, the water supply is for over 40 million people and millions of acres of irrigated agriculture. This is an essential part of the nation's water resources. We also avoid the need to develop other dams and reservoirs or overpumping of groundwater throughout the Colorado River Basin. Opportunities to provide some additional water that could be used in Colorado River Delta restoration and environmental benefits to all seven states, the Mexican, Mexico and the basin tribes, by supplying them with more water and insuring them against greater shortages. And just a quick map and view of what this whole Colorado River Basin looks like and how the Salton Sea is connected to it. The takeaway message that I want you to have here is that the Colorado River and the Salton Sea are inextricably linked. And solving one problem without the other is a temporary solution. The only long-term solution is to address both of them. And this proposal does that. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to hold questions until we have a couple more presenters. Then we'll come back with questions at that time.
Can I answer one question that the Mayor Protam asked to Rodney? You ask, with this melange of agencies and players, how does it happen that decisions get made? I recently read a history of the Golden Gate Bridge. And they had the same kind of game going on. Everybody had a different idea. Everyone had a different proposal. One engineer stood up, took the role of statesman, and said, here's what we're going to do. And they did it. And that's the role I want to play. That's the role we want to play in getting this job done. Give us the job, we'll get it done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming today. Next speaker will be Bruce Wilcox, the Assistant Secretary of Salton Sea Policy, California Natural Resource Agency.
Good morning. Thanks for taking me out of turn. I've got to go catch a flight to Sacramento. Wanted to get here. Wanted to give you an overview of where we're going and then talk a little bit about how the plans that you've heard today fit into that. Because this has always been designed as a two-part project. The first part being the 10-years, a 10-year plan to get things on the ground now to deal with issues that are happening now. And then a longer-range plan that includes the evaluation that these gentlemen have gone through. But this is the current plan for what we call the 10-year plan. A couple of changes. I think the North Lake has gotten a little bigger. This area is roughly the same size. We're also looking at a perimeter lake that comes up this side of the lake and sets out into the sea a little bit to give shoreline protection and to give some kind of connection between the two ends. Right now, and then the reason I'm going to Sacramento this afternoon is to finalize the RFP for an area in the south end of the Salton Sea. There's been criticism here today. Some of it is deserved about the delays. And so I'm pleased to tell you that we have, I think, went a long ways. Oh, thank you. I think we've went a long ways towards. It's that one for him, but not for me. There we go. I think we've gone a long ways towards solving our land use issues with some of the land use owners in the south end. We're meeting every couple of weeks. We hope to have something done by May 1 on the easements. As I'm sure you folks all know, you work in this arena too. You can't move forward with taxpayer money until you have land control. And so we've had a little trouble getting that. But we think we're there. And so in order to speed things up, the original project was the area outlined in blue here. And we're now talking about a project that is outlined in yellow. Originally, this was about 645 acres or something in that neighborhood. We're now talking about 3,770 acres that will be in this RFP that we hope will come out sometime latter part of June. Give the people a time to respond to it. And we should have contracts by the end of the year to build these areas. Now, one of the things that we're doing, and you heard both of the presenters, GEI and International Boundary, talk about making this compatible with what we're doing in the 10-year plan. So our outside berms will actually set the elevation for the rest of the Salton Sea. And so whatever we decide those are going to be, and we haven't made the final decision yet. This is a design-build project. So we haven't made the final decision yet. That will be what we carry through to the center of the Salton Sea to keep it covered for the most part. That does mean that there'll be a little bit of exposure on the east and west sides. And we'll have to do some kind of dry air quality mitigation with those. The IID has been working with us on air quality mitigation. And we've got quite a few places selected for additional air quality mitigation. That's just an outline of where the project's going to be. And here is a kind of a timeline. And you can see 2023 for the design-build phase of the project. We can start construction as part of the design-build. We don't have to have the design-build completely done to start construction. The areas to the east of the New River are already designed. We could start construction there if we needed to, to speed the process up a little bit as we move forward. Happy to, oh, and the other couple of quick projects that I think probably Phil will talk about, a partnership between Salton Sea Authority and Torres Martinez on the north end that's funded by the state of California. It's a smaller-sized wetland, but it functions. And it does need a sealer in it. But it functions. And we're ready to do Phase 2 of that. And we will put the sealer in Phase 2 when we build it. And also Red Hill Bay has the earthwork done on it. That's about 600 acres in the southeast corner of the Salton Sea. That one, as soon as we get the pumps in, we can start putting the pumps, infrastructure in, and hopefully have that built sometime right after the 1st of the year. That's one of the most immersive areas at the Salton Sea. The rest of the areas, we've got mapped as to what's most immersive and what we can do in those areas. Just a real quick comment. I know Owens Lake is a handy reference. And certainly, it was very expensive. And the comments made earlier that we are using exactly the same processes at the Salton Sea, ignore the fact that we picked out the processes that work and are using those and are not using the processes that didn't work, like the gravel covering and things like that. But in closing, I will say that we should have a decision in the next month or so about what our next step is in these projects, the three projects that were, the RFIs that were chosen from. My guess is if we move forward, it's going to be some kind of an evaluation, engineering evaluation process. Again, it's back to the kind of money we're spending here, taxpayer money. We need to know a little bit about what's happening. And I can also tell you that while I haven't met with the governor on this, I've spent a lot of time with Secretary Crowfoot, who has spent a lot of time with the governor. And the Salton Sea is a big priority for the state of California. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have time for a couple of quick questions.
Okay, Richard, if I could, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question because you talk about air quality mitigation program. Could you just briefly tell us what that would be?
Sure. The IID through the QSA has an air quality mitigation program. Very quickly, the QSA has a funding mechanism, a JPA that funds the mitigation up to a certain amount. After that amount, it's a state requirement. So IID developed, I used to work for IID in full disclosure. We developed an air quality mitigation plan. They've expanded on it greatly since I was there. And we're working with them on that plan that identifies areas that need treatment right now. And maybe there's some kind of temporary treatment we put on them. There's a surface erupting process. For instance, it doesn't require water reasonably inexpensive to do. And that might be something we do initially. That's their program. There's a vegetation enhancement program that is part of it. And then, of course, there's just simply flooding, which is another part of it.
A question for you. Can this project be done without federal funds?
Right now, we have 260 million. We had 280, but there are internal costs and consultant costs that we've had to spend. So we should have 260 million dollars for construction when we're done with the design. So that's all money that the state of California has allocated or identified, probably is not all allocated, to the project. I'm glad you asked that because one thing I forgot to say that's very exciting and I think is going to make a world of difference for us moving forward is the farm bill, which one of our consultants out of DC, along with Salton Sea Authority, the state of California to some extent, worked hard for the last four years on getting language in that farm bill that allows Salton Sea restoration money. That farm bill has literally billions of dollars in it every year. And we have, we spent a lot of time with USDA. We've showed them the 10-year plan. We've talked to them about the long-range plans. They seem to be on board. Our next step is to put together a request for funding. The only drawback is it has to be matching funds. We have 280 million dollars we can match.
But my question is, I think you've answered it. Without the federal intervention and participation, it would be virtually impossible to complete the project. Is that accurate?
I think it would take a lot longer and maybe virtually impossible. The way we would do it if we didn't have that, if we didn't have federal funding is to look for some private sector funding, which is pretty tough, or look for bond funding, which also isn't easy these days. So it would be hard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Our next speaker is Phil Rosen, Trader. And Phil is the Executive Director of Salton Sea Authority.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to brief you on the Salton Sea Authority's progress in concert collaboration with the state and the federal governments. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that provides a very quick overview in light of the time. Right now, we want to make sure we answer your questions, bring you up to speed, and leave time for questions as well. I think what you've heard today is a consensus. There's been a lot of talk about where there's a lack of agreement around the Salton Sea on many things. I think there is actually probably in some areas, more consensus than there is disagreement. Urgency of action and the areas and the challenges that need to be addressed, I think there's an acknowledgement and unanimity on that. And that is where we need to begin this conversation. What needs to be done? What can be done? What do we have in front of us right now? And that's where the Salton Sea Authority, folks, the Joint Powers Authority comprises two land use agencies, Riverside and Imperial Counties, the two major Colorado River importing entities, IID and CBWD, and major landowners, the Torres Martinez Tribe. Those local entities, they share the frustration you've heard today and the lack of progress. And they are adamant that if there is an opportunity to make progress and take a pragmatic step, we must do that. and take a pragmatic step, we must do that while not losing sight of longer-term opportunities. So what we have in front of you is that overview that Assistant Secretary just presented to you, and the consensus on desired outcomes. We have multiple challenges, and we need to, we have limited resources, including time. So what can we do with the time we have right now, tomorrow, and in the ensuing times, to address simultaneously the health issues, the habitat issues, and economic opportunity? And what we have is actually consensus among the Salt and Sea Authority members on that Salt and Sea Management Plan. I would also hasten to add, there is concern that we not stop there. That is a starting point. It is not a perfect plan, it's not a complete plan, it is a beginning of a plan, and it's good enough to start. We don't want to have the good become the enemy, the perfect become the enemy of the good. So we have mentioned that there are, there's real funding sources that we haven't had. It's taken years to get us to this point, and we have a pot of money, approaching $4 billion, available for projects that align very, very closely because of the work we've done and so the leadership with folks like Senator Dianne Feinstein to assure and provide opportunity for projects at the Salt and Sea to align with the farm bill. That's new. That was signed into law back in this past December. So we have opportunity to align those funds and other federal funds with the investments made by the state of California on these first 10-year plans and then some. You've also heard discussion in the past on the local commitments to enhanced infrastructure finance districting. Board of Supervisors here in Riverside County stepped up to authorize creation of a EIFD, very similar to how redevelopment agency would operate, an overlay of a district that could capture revenues created by infrastructure investment. Without that infrastructure investment, the improvement in the property would not occur, and that additional increment of revenue would not be present. So tying the nexus of benefit to an infrastructure investment that can generate revenue from a local standpoint, that's new. That's never really been out on the, I mean, the concept's been out there, but it's never been actually authorized by elected bodies. Imperial County is following suit. They have a workshop scheduled on April 25th, working in concert with the Southern California Association of Governments to create a complementary infrastructure financing district. What do these two districts have in common, other than creating revenue streams that can be applied to infrastructure on the sea? They are joined in an MOU between the two counties to cooperatively approach land use planning at the Salt and Sea so that these investment pools can align and accomplish greater good than if they're approached separately. That is the basis of the request that has been circulated to the cities and the counties and the tribes that has gained unanimous support in every city, every jurisdiction that I just mentioned, supporting this kind of cooperative effort. It also helps drive the infrastructure finance districts and the kind of infrastructure that at the county line lines up properly and the elevations line up properly. And all of this needs to be coordinated with the state of California, who frankly is in the driver's seat with the main pots of money and the bonds that you've just heard. So that is the proposition that has been posited to this body, an actionable step with real funding, real projects to move forward. So what are our concerns? In the past, there have been various levels of readiness that were splintered somewhat by competing proposals or diversion proposals, and I think that is one concern that the members of the Salt and Sea Authority would have at this juncture. We understand there is opportunity long term. We're thrilled that there are private sector folks stepping up to make that happen. We're thrilled that there is a shared concern and an interest in working in parallel rather than apart. That's all good. Our concern is that we continue to move forward and expedite perimeter lake plans because we believe there is ample reason to, oops, to support that politically, from a hydrologic standpoint, from a habitat, human health standpoint. We're ready to move. We have the specter, you've seen these scary photos before, this is not going to approve in the absence of action. So what we want to see is an address of all those multiple challenges with a planet provides multiple benefits. So we've had some of these questions addressed by previous presenters, and as we, this council considers whether to entertain additional provisions on a MOU that is addressed to a specific program or project that is included in the Salt and Sea Management Plan and a program that has designs and funding to move forward. These are the kind of milestones we think warrant consideration before adding on. A comment was made earlier about this is a sea-to-sea water import scenario is a long term. We all recognize that. It's not a short sprint. The vehicle for support on a perimeter lake is more of a hybrid. It's not a sprint. If you've ever run track, you know you don't put on long-distance shoes to run a sprint, nor would you put on sprint shoes to run a 10K. This vehicle is, that perimeter lake is not necessarily a sprint, but it gets us where we are right now. Those 10-year projects can be built out into a larger perimeter lake that does not harm or impede any of the projects you heard on the sea-to-sea. So we would hope that we could finish this particular leg of this race with a perimeter lake and move forward and set the stage for longer-term opportunities as they become viable and more defined through the process with the state of California. You've seen this before. This is a graphic that was produced by the Salt and Sea Authority and its state-funded Salt and Sea feasibility action plan. And that perimeter lake is that dark blue area around the edge that takes existing hydrology, captures it at the point a tributary builds out with a levee along the edges to cover dusty playa to restore habitat and to create some economic benefits for recreational use. And critically, particularly at the north end, it creates a deep-water habitat you're not going to find due to the bathymetry of the sea elsewhere. So that's going to be critical to the Pacific Flyway. It's not going to be built overnight. The strategy here is to design projects and scope them in such a manner that it reflects budget reality in Sacramento and Washington DC. So we take this elephant, it's a big, complex elephant, we eat it one bite at a time, and those smaller sections you saw earlier are components of the larger plan. That is not the end of the plan, it's the start of the plan. So that's how we get to the end of this. Give you some scale here. Lake Elsinore, recreational lake, and the Diamond Valley Lake are, Diamond Valley's one of the larger freshwater reservoirs in the inland empire, and it gives you some sense of how those compare to surface area in a perimeter lake scenario. So you've seen these slides before. This is what we want to see at the end of the day, is a healthy, more prosperous Salt and Sea. We think we can get there within the constraints of the existing hydrology and funding if we work cooperatively and take action on the opportunities that are in front of us here today and move forward with the consensus, historic consensus on perimeter lake MOU. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. Any questions?
Don't think so, not right now. Next speaker is Pat Cooper, Supervisor Perez's office.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak today. The reason that we're here is because we had asked for support for the By County MOU a little over a month ago, and you passed it. And we were very grateful and appreciative that you supported the By County MOU. The MOU came about at the request of Imperial County Supervisor Ryan Kelly. He approached Supervisor Manuel Perez about creating this MOU to show the state that the local jurisdictions, the land use jurisdictions, had unity on common goals and agreed projects. And those agreed projects were the Salt and Sea Management Plan, otherwise known as the 10-Year SSMP, Riverside County's North Lake Plan, and broad support for the perimeter lake concept, which originally started from then Supervisor John Benoit. The MOU intent, and I wrote most of it on behalf of the two counties, the intent of the MOU was to address short and midterm projects, 10- to 12-, 15-year projects, not long-term projects, 25 to 35 years. The intent was to let the state know that we agreed on these items, and we purposely left out water import, sea-to-sea, or any of the long-term proposals. And we purposely left that out because at the time last year, we did not have an agreement on what those proposals would be, what both counties would support, because it was still in discussion. And quite frankly, as of today, it's still in discussion. You heard the state, Bruce Wilcox, talk about they are considering further vetting it. And so we do not feel, Supervisor Perez does not feel, that an amendment is appropriate for this MOU. It does not fit into the intent of the By County MOU. We do not oppose a water import suggestion or any other proposals that are, that the state is looking at currently. We feel that the MOU should stand as it is and intact until there can be some agreement on what a long-term solution can look like. The counties are focused on the 10-year plan and the county's North Lake Plan. The water importation concept does step into federal jurisdiction. We have not seen or been made aware of any Mexican-elected official or government who has pledged a commitment for support of a water import project which would be based in Mexico. To our knowledge, we have not seen any documents that support water import. The bulk of the heavy left would be on the Mexico side. We feel it is premature to ask Riverside County to support such a concept before we have support from Mexico. Imagine if Mexico proposed taking water from Rancho Mirage to benefit their Dry Lake Laguna Salada without first seeking your support. Our environmental stakeholders and partners are not supporting this at this time either, as well as our business coalition, the Salt and Sea Action Committee, as well as the Water District stakeholders, who are also our partners. It takes local jurisdictions 10 years to get a road bridge project-funded plan and executed to completion. A water import project does not fit into the first-phase 10-year SSMP. The SSMP seeks to take immediate steps to mitigate air quality concerns, and we are fully aware that we have a legislative mandate to address air quality issues today. Our commitment to the public, through their support of the bonds and state budget allocations, has to spend public dollars, is to spend public dollars wisely and for immediate projects at the Salt and Sea, not in Mexico. There is not enough money or resource to push forward today on a long-term solution. We have limited resources for the 10-year plan, and the county is seeking an EIFD plan to support the North Lake Plan. We have begun to process our Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District Plan. We have just recently created our Public Finance Authority and are looking to hold that public meeting at least by the end of this year. And so I would like to reiterate that at this time Supervisor Perez prefers not to have the MOU amended at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for you. You mentioned that Riverside County was not willing to make a decision until Mexico came forward with approval on the plan?
At least we would want to know that they are supportive of a plan, supportive of a concept, are aware of it.
Do we know that, whether Mexico supports this plan?
Not know that. We have no official documentation. We have no letter of support, no letter of any type of documentation that says that they would support such a measure to move water from the Gulf to the Salt and Sea.
Sounds like we're kind of in a stalemate, that the county won't do anything until Mexico approves the project, and Mexico probably won't do anything until the county does something.
Well, we're at, we're going to support the North Lake Plan. Supervisor Perez thought it was important that we begin protecting Riverside County, and so our portion was to engineer a plan. We are working with the state on that. The state has been very cooperative in reviewing the plans, as well as participating in a design that would keep water in the north part of the Salt and Sea. So we are moving forward. We're part of the state's consultation, as well as the Salt and Sea Authority. We sit on the Salt and Sea Authority Member Agency Board, the JPA, so that we continually have, we're in partnership with the state, as well as the other member agencies, and continue the conversations with the state to eventually support a long-term solution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. You said you haven't received any input from Mexico, you haven't received any letters. Mentioned a couple of modes of communication, and you say there has been none. Have you opened the door to communications to Mexico? What have you, what has the county done by way of writing to Mexico or sending a delegate or somebody to find out what their view is with respect to bringing importing Sea of Cortez water as part of the solution? What have you done to elicit their interest or support?
Supervisor Perez did ask the water import folks for...
Who specifically, when you say water import folks?
Water import folks would be from the presentations that you heard, as well as the coalition group.
Contacted the people we've heard here today?
He has met with them, yes. And there was a request to identify who supports it in Mexico. His concern is that the bulk of the project would be traipsing over Imperial Valley and not Riverside County.
Okay.
So the bulk of the project starts at Mexico, traipses across Imperial Valley, and hits the sea, doesn't hit Riverside County.
Without getting into an argument about which county benefits more and all of these arguments and discussions that everybody can support, I asked you, what specifically has the supervisor or the Board of Supervisors, what contacts specifically have they had with Mexican government officials or state officials in Maha to find out, is there any area here that we can begin to explore, the concept of importation of water for part of the solution? Has there been, have you got any documents that show that reaching out to the Mexican authorities?
I am not aware of any.
Have you got any documents in your, it must be one big file by now, have you got any documents that take the position that importing water from Mexico is unsound or unrealistic from some perspective? Have you got something that you could forward to us? If you've got something that you could forward to us, to our city manager, that shows why it's of no value to consider the importation of water from Mexico?
The supervisor's position has been to be...
First off, have you got documents?
No, sir.
Okay, so his position is whatever you've learned in the last conversation you had before you came here, and that's, everybody understands those things. But if you haven't got something that shows a substantive effort to investigate a question that on the surface, to the rank amateurs like you and me and us, if you haven't got any documents that show that it's futile to go far with that exploration, then you've just got people talking. And talk is what we've been doing ever... I was in that storm, you probably were too. Somebody had a photograph of that storm of, I don't know, about 20 years ago or something. You lived here, I lived here, my wife and I lived here. That storm was pretty bad, and it was, caused a lot of disease between here and the lake itself. These are issues that mean a lot to us, to our residents. And to say, and I have all the respect in the world, as you know, for supervisors, for our supervisor, but to say, we're opposed to something and we haven't made any contact. You today heard a lot of people talk positively about the prospects that we haven't explored to test whether their positions are accurate or not. The Salt and Sea Coalition people, these are amateurs who care about where we live. They may have a professional tournament, I know they have some professional people, but they haven't hired outside professionals, I don't think, or not many if any. We're all serious about this issue. It's not a political issue to us. And the fact that the Board of Supervisors has done nothing to explore the issue of importing water from Maha is really disappointing. And you can pass it on to Manny, if you will.
Appreciate your comments today.
You're welcome.
Let's see, Jasmine Phillips?
What did we hear? If I can just add something for the council. So, we've been given materials, we've seen the PowerPoint presentations, these materials will be scanned and made part of the record. So, if anyone would like a copy of the PowerPoint presentations or the materials that were handed out to the council during the study session, they will be available on the city's website. If you go to the study session agenda, all the copies of these documents will be made available. This has also been recorded and filmed, and it will show on the city's website and also on RMTV. And then, Mr. Mayor, I think at this point, it's appropriate to have any members of the audience that would like to speak.
Okay. If you have not presented, made a presentation, would you like to speak?
Mr. Terry.
Yes. Real quickly, I'd like to address the first question that was asked by the mayor pro tem about that water agreement that was in the paper. That was an agreement about fresh water, and that's what everybody's fighting about. Mark Twain said it best. You know the quote, "Whiskey's for drinking, waters for fighting." This is saltwater. This will supplement what they're fighting about. This should make everybody in that room happy that they have an alternative for the Salt and Sea. I wanted to address one of the things that Ms. Cooper just said, that this MOU had unanimous support in every city. That is not true. Desert Hot Springs did the MOU, signed on the MOU because they liked our amendment, five to nothing. Palm Desert signed the MOU with our amendment. Palm Springs put off voting because of the things that Pat Cooper said after we did our presentation, and are waiting to hear what comes out of this meeting before they make their decision. We just went to NDO. NDO voted two, two people voted to support it after Pat got to speak last. Three abstained. They count that as passing under Robert's Rule of, Robert's Rules, whatever it's called. So, there is not unanimous support in every city. Also, I'd like to point out that Israel and Jordan are working on a very similar plan, about the same distance, and Israel and Jordan can work together, but US and Mexico can't? Israel, US has planned $100 million for that, they've pledged. And let me just finish up by reading you the actual amendment, in case there's any confusion, what we're asking for. Whereas the parties are supportive of comprehensive analysis of ocean water importation as a long-term solution for the restoration of the Salt and Sea, the parties respectfully request that ocean water implementation be incorporated into the state's SSMP long-term plan. That's not asking them to put their plans on a back burner. It's not asking them to give us the money that they want. What we really want is the engineering to start and not waste another five years or 10 years before we get started. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joan Taylor. Joan?
Mayor, members of the council, thanks so much for looking into this issue. It is indeed extremely important. My name is Joan Taylor. I'm the local conservation chairwoman of the local Sierra Club. I'm also an appointee to the state's Long Range Planning Committee, which is looking into this very kind of thing. I'll agree with you, too slowly, all of this is happening way too slowly. There's been some conjecture as to what my personal position is on both the long-term and the North Lake, and also on the Sierra Club's position. I'd like to clarify that. And as far as the North Lake goes, the Sierra Club and all the major environmental organizations involved in working on the Salt and Sea for the last two decades, support the North Lake Plan. We feel it's viable. It's the only deep-water project proposed in the state's, in the near-term projects. And one interesting aspect of it is that it does not rely on polluted new river water, instead uses the water in the drains on our side of the lake, which are significantly cleaner and have less heavy metals. So, it's a good plan. The size of it's undetermined. We believe it'll be thousands of acres, not hundreds, as one slide suggested. In any case, very enthusiastic about the North Lake and want to see it move forward without delay. As far as the long-term, the water import, the club has no position. I have no position, however, on the Long Range Planning Committee. I think I'm one of the more people who's more skeptical that there will be adequate water to sustain even these projects in the long term, because the Colorado River users are going to go after the water that is feeding all of those projects on the south end of the lake. We see that happening in the QSA. We see that happening in the drought contingency plan, which apparently has just been approved in Washington. So, yes, we should be looking into this, the sooner the better. In fact, the state water board, at the urging of environmentalists, put a deadline on culminating a long-term plan. And that deadline that has been given to the Natural Resources Agency is December 31st, 2022. So, yeah, we have to get in gear. And we appreciate the local people raising the visibility of this issue. However, it should be done in such a way that is sure not to impede the near-term projects. They are viable, they are going to use good water, not saltwater, to create projects that will enhance the communities. The North Lake will have multiple benefits, the others will be mainly for birds and habitat, the ones on the south end will be shallow. But I would suggest, if you do consider this amendment, that you think about the wording in it. For instance, it uses the word ocean water, and at least one of the projects does not intend to use ocean water. It's going to put in wells and take in saline water that is, you know, at the edge of the Gulf, but it's not technically ocean water. So, you might want to say water import rather than ocean water import. And the other thing is that it does kind of mandate the outcome of the long-term plan, and that is a public process, it's a decision the state is going to make. I understand that the city of Palm Desert put in the wording, "consider" rather than "incorporate." Right now, it says, "be incorporated," maybe being given full consideration or priority consideration, might make more sense in terms of process. That's all I had, and good luck in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Next speaker is Tom Swan.
I'm the president of Veterans for Peace, and I want to congratulate Mr. Hobart, Councilmember Hobart, for your line of questioning. You were very effective, I was very impressed, I've always been impressed with you. And the mayor also did a very fine job today, and all the council did a fine job. Veterans for Peace supports the amendment. We ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You might explain, we won't be taking any vote on anything today.
Right.
And that's not on the calendar.
Next speaker, Lillian Garcia.
Good afternoon. I just would want to inform each of you. Last month, we had Customs Border Protection personnel from Washington DC Headquarters come out to Imperial County and Riverside County within the Salt and Sea Basin, and air sampling was done on the agents. I just wanted to inform you guys that what you guys can know, the severity of the issue. It is a public health issue right now happening. Federal agents are being exposed. Washington DC is already aware. If you guys want me to let you know exactly who came out, for instance, the Customs Border Protection Occupational Safety and Health Director Mick was out here, United States Border Patrol Policy Division Assistant Chief, Mr. Beltrán, was out here. I can give you guys the names, but I just thought it would be in the best interest of you guys to know that not even Riverside County or Imperial County supervisors are aware that people are out here from Washington DC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address this issue? Yes, would you like to come up and state your name and address, please?
Honorable members of the city of Rancho Mirage, my name is Robert Montenegro. I am a 12-year veteran of the United States Military, four years ROTC, four years active duty in the United States Army, four years in the National Guard. I have been acting as an independent research consultant to Mr. Parker's group for about four months now, and I would like to bring three points to your attention, if I may. The first point, I have found a memorandum from a Department of Defense security company called Wackenhut from 1981, which states that the Torres Martinez Tribe allowed 14,000 square acres on the northern basin of the Salt and Sea to be used for weapons testing in 1981. One of these weapons was a bioagent, which is known as T-cell lymphomic bacteria. It's a cyanobacteria. I currently do not have any proof of whether or not this weapon was actively deployed within the Salt and Sea Basin. However, there are reports from the northern end basin stating that cyanobacterias have been found within the Salt and Sea proper. So, I'm currently trying to find information on whether or not, as I previously stated, this weapon was actually tested within Torres Martinez land. Second point, I have found a law firm which represents the Sandia Corporation, that's the former Atomic Energy Commission, how should I word this properly, front company? That was building atomic weapons and testing them within the Salt and Sea Test Base. This law firm is called Sanford and Sanford, and they're based out of 36 Rockefeller Center in New York. They have currently paid out $9.8 million in healthcare fees to the former employees of the Salt and Sea Test Base. Why? I'll just leave it at that. The third point I'd like to make is the use of Agent Orange within the Salt and Sea Basin. I actually approached both Manuel Garcia, Stephen Hernandez, and Congressman Reese on this issue, the day that President Trump was inaugurated, because there was a protest in Coachella against inauguration. On this issue, I have documented proof, and I can materialize it to any member of this council here today, that Agent Orange was deployed within the Salt and Sea Basin in the 1960s. One of the byproducts of Agent Orange is one of the most aggressive carcinogens known to man. It's a cancer-causing agent. I have a family member, an aunt, her name is Bernadette Montenegro, who works at the Loma Linda Hospital. She told me in private, and I am now informing you council members, that 80% of all children dying of lymphoma at the Loma Linda Children's Hospital come out of the eastern end of the Coachella Valley. So, those are the three points I just wanted to make.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Art Garts.
Very briefly, thank you for all your patience for enduring our passion and our drive on a most vital subject. I ask that we look at the big picture, the big picture being, as society, it's wise for us to look at, in the United States, how did we get here? How did we become this entity known as the United States? Look at all that we have accomplished. What did it take to arrive at this position in the world? And I put it to you, yes, lots of natural resources, but we, the founders and those that pioneered, have come before us, they did not take no for an answer. They had a can-do attitude. They didn't ask, "How little can we do to get by?" They said, "How much can we do?" We did not put a man on the moon for no reason. A famous president said, "We don't do this because it's easy, we do it because it's hard." Saving the sea will never be easy. No one has told us that. But if we look at the long-term rewards of what can be, and if we have the intestinal fortitude to come together and make it happen, we can do something truly wonderful. Mother Nature should not be considered a liability. The sea can absolutely be an asset, it's up to us to make it that way. The sea gets no credit, that it produces about 1.1 million acre-feet of fresh water each year. We don't see it, okay, but it's not fake news. It probably goes up in the sky, is well documented. The sea evaporates approximately 76 inches a year. Now, that water goes up without salt content, it's desaltified for absolutely free by Mother Nature, but the sea gets no credit. We need to start thinking long-term about, this is not just a man-made problem. The sea has been and has not been for thousands of years, and we need to restore it to its rightful place. I thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank all of you today who came out to give your thoughts on this very important project that we're looking at. thoughts on this very important project that we're looking at. And any comments from the council before we close here?
You know, I wasn't going to make any, I wasn't going to make any comment, but sitting here and listening to this, I can hearken back to Sonny Bono when he was elected, and everybody thought, "Well, there you go. He has the notoriety. He has the position, and he'll be able to get something done with the Salt and Sea." That was how many years ago? Sitting here and listening to all of you to take the time and the effort to do what you're doing, I commend you all. To this side of all of you who have the answers in your companies and your work, I commend you also. However, hearing what I've heard from politicians and our government is very distressing with a smirk, and I hope that doesn't continue. I hope we all work together to pull this together, and it isn't another 10 years, because that is a late, late timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And once again, thanks for coming out, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.